It is Tuesday, September the 13th, 2022 at seven, 6:58 a.m. We're at the Oaks Public Schools Conference Room for the regular school board meeting of the Oaks School Board. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda within your packet is, are there any additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Heimbach moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I'd like to welcome all visitors, staff members mostly today. Mr. Jensen is here, who's a sort of a staff member for us. And Mrs. Beebe and soon Mrs. Springs will be joining us by soon. So, welcome and thank you for being here. Public Communications, this morning we're going to have a short presentation from Mr. DJ Jensen, our instructor of our high school humanities class. Would you please step up to the podium? It's really low. It will fit you better than some others who will be using.
Stand to the room. Yeah, just want to make a brief presentation. Thank you, Sonya, Anna, about the humanities class, a little bit of history. This is the eighth year that I've been doing this class. And it's a first in both the state of North Dakota and South Dakota where a university faculty member is actually in the classroom, not ITV, not Zoom. In terms of the class presentation. The class is based primarily on reading original material in translation and focuses on writing for students to prepare them basically to organize their thoughts clearly and they'll have a good choices, not simply with textual things that I present, but in terms of life choices, so on and so forth. Any questions?
So can you give an example of some of the readings that you have the students work on?
We spend a fair amount of time with the background, reading the American Constitution, and Enlightenment ideas, history, philosophy, reading from Immanuel Kant, Thomas Hobbes, John Locke, all writers who would have been familiar to the founders of Constitution, the writers of the Constitution, Hamilton, Jefferson, Washington, and so forth. We also go to classes at University of Jamesstown, which is new this year, and a class coming up at UND, I'll meet with University of North Dakota faculty next week to prepare classes at UND for this class. They don't just go up and tour the campus, have a lunch with the building, but actually enter a classroom, like people sitting around the field here, engage one-on-one with higher ed classes, juniors and seniors, philosophy of law specifically at UND. So for high school seniors in Oxford, Dakota, this is quite something. As I like to say, the class is not about DJ. The class is about the students working themselves. And a number of you here have had students in the class. Another important thing I want to say is that in the cost-saving venture, I negotiated with University of Jamestown to essentially have the tuition cost for this three-credit class, six credits worth a year. So that over $650, I believe, to the point of $1,200 or $1,300 million. Plus, I've been able to gain, I get some money from OBI for scholarship money for those who need it. So altogether, it's cost-saving. It's preparation for college. And they can shave, in some cases, almost a year off college classes by kicking, not simply my class, but other dual-credit classes. So in summary, I would say, cost-saving, college prep, big time. Let me give you one quick example. Last weekend, I had supper with a couple of former students who were first-year students. And one of the students is a pharmacy resident. She went through pharmacy school at SDSU and is now a hospital resident at Avera in Sioux Falls. She has 32 patients, and she said, DJ, every Monday morning, we meet with physicians to go through our pharmacy regimen for these patients. And one of the things I have to do is make argumentative presentations about why the medication that I'm choosing for these patients is valuable. And she said, the class comes back every time that I stand in front of a room. I'm a little bit nervous here. I'm not a good public speaker. But she said, every time I stand up and make a presentation to doctors, you're all physicians, and I'm making a presentation for my pharmacy regimen, the class comes to mind. We have to organize ourselves, discipline, and be able to take feedback, which is what the class is about.
I saw Logan was, I made Logan take it. Well, Claire was in it, so it was a little bit more. He took the class, but he said of all of his classes that he's taken, that that class is the one that he uses most because he uses it in every one of his classes on writing. And he said, even if he doesn't agree with a topic, he can argue, he can write it, you know, and so that the skills that he's gotten out of DJ's class, it doesn't matter what subject is, whether it's criminal justice or one of his law classes or whatever that that he, those skills that he has, he's able to write and speak like he needs to at that level. So he said that, I was right. The best words I could hear, but you know, the teaching that class was, so if you have a child in it, I would definitely say you want your child to take that class if they're going to go to college to be prepped for it.
When do you operate or what?
It's eight to nine thirty, I mean approximately. What is it, eight fifteen to nine or something like that? Twenty or something like eight period.
This is a really unique dual-credit class. I'm not aware, well, as DJ said, of a college. DJ is a college professor. And I told him when he came to present that I was going to propose that we double or even triple his Oaks Public School salary this year. His efforts here cost the district nothing except maybe.
I told him, the class, I would do it for a dollar. Really, and I'm absolutely happy to be teaching this class.
So it's a unique opportunity for Oaks Public School students. It's a different dual-credit opportunity than anything else that that is available to us that I'm aware of. And it's a usable class for our students. So I appreciate DJ coming in this morning to share a little bit about it. And if they, will they be having a town hall this year in the spring, maybe?
In the spring, we'll have a town debate. Because of COVID, we didn't do that for a couple of years. There was a debate where you get your news, some of you may have been to that one. And then what does it mean to be a good citizen in our civic arrangement? That was a debate. This year, we haven't decided on a topic. The first year, there were about 125 people there from the town. And the students, like the class, the student, it's their debate. It's not DJ's debate. It's their debate. They set it up. They make it work. And a lot of fun. So, engagement with the town. And by the way, everyone is welcome. I tell people this all the time. And for the first couple of years, Josh and different people come into the class. Brandon has been in the class. You're welcome to visit. You don't have to stay for the full 90 minutes or 45, whatever. Calm, sit for a few minutes, listen. And yeah, the only problem is that it's, as Robert was saying, when is the class? It's a period, first thing.
We can go right after our fourth meeting.
The original class today, I was told, there's some a-period activity.
Thank you, DJ, for your work and for being here. The other public communication, you've had a card in your packet from the Maroti family. Also, I received a letter from the North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders thanking us for our support. We continue to pay our dues and encourage our administrators to participate in those activities. And then one other item was the very thorough note from Mrs. German on the work that she and some of the music supporters have done throughout the summer in organizing and sorting out the band uniforms and the older trophies and awards and distributing those. And they've done some really good work. So we appreciate that very much. And there was a request that they be able to use the money raised in the band uniform sales towards the completion of some display boxes, which I, it was, they raised $342. And I assume that we can defer that decision to our administrators. All right, any other public communication? If not, let's move on to the reports, the administrative reports from the food director, activities director, technology, maintenance, transportation. All were in your packets. Were there any questions or concerns to be raised on those?
Um, I didn't have a question, I was there in the kitchen report. There was a good message. She didn't know if anybody had noticed. My son said the tacos were excellent. First week of school, and he does not compliment the kitchen very often.
Very good. Okay, so we should encourage students and staff to compliment the kitchen when they notice something that they like.
I had H on there, the school board committee report. I was thinking maybe if Monica and Robert would want to talk about their visits.
Okay, let's get to if the high school principal and elementary principal and instructional coaches reports were also in our packets. Were there any items that the two of you wanted to highlight today? Or any specific questions for them? Content of their report?
Just the high school, the report. The junior high. Lot of questions that are coming up on the grading, and I'm sure that's still going to be a work in progress as we go along.
Yep. A lot of things are going on with the grading and the program. We're working through some of those challenges, but things are starting to smooth out once things start getting in during the grade. Kids understand how it's actually marked. And I would say the biggest misconception is, when you get a grade a lot, it's, you're done, right? Like, this is the grade you got, we're moving on, but it's just currently where they're at. So it's being tracked as they progress towards mastery. So it is a shift compared to what grades were normally for assessment, whatever, and then we move on. This one is just an ongoing process. And they can always go back and improve on those if they have mastered it. So it's just a shift for us, seven through eight, and then the ninth and tenth grade classes. So it is, it is moving on.
How does that work for eligibility?
Also, as I'm moving forward, really, really for our junior high, the lowest they would give would be a one, which is the D. So a technicality for them to get a zero or to get an F when possible, along with that happens if they're completing absolutely no work. And then I would step into the next class for eligibility. So really, as long as, because we can't penalize the students when they take a pre-assessment and they don't know the stuff. They're wanting, they don't know it. So we've marked that just so the parents can see where to start and where they're growing. So as they're going through that unit, that lesson, wherever it is, they're going to keep growing, and then you'll see the marks change. So as far as eligibility, the kid getting an F is ineligible. Math, mathematics isn't impossible. It's great and system. That's been a big question.
You said ninth and tenth.
We have freshmen, we have a ninth-grade English class, I'm piloting, Mrs. Haffman's back. And then Ms. Sheeler and Mr. Snyder said they wanted to do one section, tenth grade. And so when this whole thing started, I told the staff, I said, if some of you that want to pilot this, I'll back to 100%. Communicated that with the parents that have the school starting saying, hey, this is going to be a different change. This is going to be a different look. So those are the two classes, and the high school is starting it. So we've got a really good group of junior high, dabble in the ninth grade, and one in the 10th grade to evaluate how that goes before we either push to more classes or we more have to repay off as before.
We're trying really hard to communicate out more just to make sure that we're ahead of the ball. So I wrote a blog. I don't know if it was posted.
You know, I would refer parents to that because I thought that would get a really good job of explaining the process.
Oh, good. I'm glad that's it. So just, we're going to just try to front-load a lot of that stuff to help people understand and pass the message about what we're doing.
But the high school, I mean, it's not like we're, we're not going there.
This year?
Next year. Right?
We haven't made that decision yet. We'll see.
We gotta evaluate all this.
Yeah.
Here, I, in those high school classes, you need to be there from kids and parents on the complex for me to push more, just push it out.
That's why, you know, the pilot classes to see, hey, how does this work? Or what do we need to fix before it keeps going?
Hey, any other questions regarding elementary superintendent, or rather, high school or elementary principal and instructional coaches reports? How about the superintendent's reports? Was there anything you wanted to highlight or were there questions?
I think we're just the plant updates. Because that's, I think, right now, plant and budget takes up about 90% of my time.
Favorite topic?
I'm taking that finance class, so that'll help a little bit. But the plant stuff, I just go to, um, favor really 101 and read picks. The plant stuff for dummies. Yeah, absolutely.
Was it in your report, the enrollment number?
Yes.
So was that just basically kind of spread all across to all the grades and pretty?
21 in the elementary and seven in the high school. I believe those are the numbers that, because they're in there, yeah. So that's not going to affect us this year, but it's going to be next year. And if we gain those kids back during the school year, you know, the estimated enrollment will take place after January for next year's funding. But that, hopefully, we gain some kids during the school year. But usually, we get some kids right at the very beginning of the school year, but we really didn't get any new kids this year. We just have people that moved out on us, big families, right?
All right, does the facilities committee have a report or anything to share with us? Have recommendations? Was it the east entrance you were?
Yeah. So, um, I, well, I mean, I'll maybe I can just lead into it. So when our, when we met, we went around the plants and we looked at stuff and re kind of walked us through the plumbing issues and walked us through the east entrance. We were out there for a while trying to decide what we're going to do with that piece of it. We also went up to the science labs to look for in there. So after that meeting, then I, we had the new engineer come in from higher engineering. And we, right, that was after, oh, yeah, that was a suggestion. So higher engineering came in and said that they agreed with what Hammond and Harry it says. So then I reached out to Michael J. Burns, hoping that, okay, because we've already been working with them, maybe the cost, it would be more cost-effective than going out to a new a new architect for it. So, and then he suggested, you know, at the time, we were talking about late fall, but now he's suggesting December, because he said, we're in the midst of construction season right now. We're not going to have time to work on bids, so.
So you're not going to be looking, will you be looking for action from us?
Yes, later on, I do, I kind of want to, but maybe I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, that's the biggest. I just wanted to make sure that it was absolutely necessary before we had to spend the money. That's what I was wanting to get, a second. Came back the same way, so. Yeah. I mean, it's just something that we're going to have to plan to do, and I think that's going to take all the money that we have available. So I don't think there's part of other projects until we know a dollar on that. I don't see how we can do a lot of other little projects in the meantime, so.
Yeah, and then with the east entrance there, they have two scenarios, whether they put some cloud up there to break the ice down. Even with the heat strips on there, there's a noise that route that water. But it's a fix for rain. But I think what we decided for now is to use the east entrance until we get a bad snowstorm and then possibly have rain at the last morning. And there's no, probably some stuff over there. Guys, they're out in the morning.
One thing, so we have semester money that is sitting out there. It has to be used by 2024. It's quite a large amount because originally, the conversation with the board and Mr. Getz was to replace all the windows using that money, but we didn't get in on the grant because it was going to be a 50/50 grant. We didn't get in on that grant. So we have this money, and we're going to have to make some decisions. But that S R money can only be used for certain things, you know. So it won't cover all of those windows because those windows will probably be like $700,000. But I think with some of this S R funds, maybe there might be a possibility to do that east entrance. So I, Shannon and I will be working together on that S R money to see if we can use some of that funds that, you know, in smaller amounts, you know, it would be a $700,000 pop access. But it might be, we might have some opportunity to do some of those little jobs with the S R money.
Because the windows are basically just.
Yes, unless, you know, we may be able to, Michael J. Burns said that we might be able to do one side of it. He said, schools do this all the time because we can't afford to do all of their windows. So like, we could do our priorities, might be the south and the west side, you know, the rooms that get super hot. Like Brennan and I were talking in the gate, that we could maybe do the, those sides. We might be able to afford to do that with our S R money because the S R dollars, that's what our original S R application was for, was for those windows because of the ventilation piece of it. So we might be able to do both of those, but like I said, we have till 2024 to decide on that. So we've got a little bit of time here for that. But Michael J. Burns will also work along with us to give us a bid on those windows and say, okay, let's try this side and let's try that. And gets the package. So he and I are, we'll talk as it gets closer, he said, after construction season is winding down. And we can make some decisions on, because that S R money is spinning out, is sitting out there, right? For us to use for things like that, you can't use it for just anything, which is a frustrating piece of it. So you find these projects that will fit under the umbrella of those. So that might still be a possibility. There's still a $1,000 grant out there. Who knows? Grants pop up all the time that we possibly, especially for things like that, right? Coming up. But for now, I would say the windows are on hold because we got to do that science work.
All right, any other questions or comments on any of the administrative reports? If not, is there a motion to accept those reports? Nagel moves to accept the administrative reports. Is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. The next item, action items, the first is calendar amendment. Yep, on page 36 of our packets.
Okay, so I kind of explained it in the board packet, but we originally have the 22nd, 23rd of May down as our makeup days for storm days. But you can't go to school after graduation or go to that block. So we needed to take those storm days and mark them somewhere else. So we just went back and we looked at our calendar and we just placed them as February 20th and April 10th. Now, those aren't guaranteed that we have to go to school on those days because we have more than enough hours. I got those contact versus contract, like last year, we have enough contact hours, like quite a bit more than. But let's say we have 10 storm days and we end up having to get some of those contact hours. Those would be those days that we would have available. But that could end up being contract days if, you know, the board so decides that we need to have more days. Those could end up being contract days. We need to have those in our calendars. So just me, I need you to approve the amendment of the, hopefully, this is the last one, right?
I appreciate you catching this. So the, the, the request is to remove the makeup days from May 22nd and 23rd and move them to February 20th and April 10th?
Yes.
Right. All right, is there a motion to approve that calendar change? Thorpe moves to approve the calendar change, moving makeup days from May 22nd and 23rd to February 20th and April 10th. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Let's take a roll call, please.
Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Monica Heimbach? Robert Thorpe?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Sonya Miel?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the official logo. Are you carrying that, Marie? Marine? There was nothing in our packet, so.
I did bring something here.
We did a task force, we started in the spring of 2021. It came on as a result of what we switched our website from all of, from word press to Blackboard. Part, part of that website was the fact that they have graphic designer. We upgraded to updated fresh logo for us. Dr. Steinoff said that we trusted serving on the task force. And he said, since he was leaving, I'll let you leave the task force. I was staying with that. We did bring in quite a few of our staff members. We tried to get people that have been here a long time, young teachers, alumni, have been board members. And we brought the whole group together and in the spring of 2021, we started working with Blackboard. Looking at different iterations of logos. In the fall of 21, we added Rob and it's the new AD. And Mackenzie Wirth, she has some graphic design experience, trying to get input from them too.
So the goal was to provide a new updated tornado logo that can be used as a piece of brand. The twisty logo that's common used today was originally designed by Dex DeFlair in the 90s. That logo is only in a raster format and can't be reproduced properly in large format. A large image reproduction requires the graphic to be a vector file. Due to this, the task force, task force started looking at many logos from local area high schools, colleges, professional sports, and other schools with a tornado logo. We were looking to draw inspiration. The task force received quite a few sample logos to choose from, provided by the graphic designer at Blackboard. Over the next few weeks, the group narrowed down quite a few iterations of different proposed logos. Examples were provided by the Blackboard designer, and the group would eliminate some, ask for revision, and point at different features on certain ones and ask them to be blended. In the process, there seemed to be a division in our task force group on choosing a set of logos that could be provided as choices.
So it came to, last winter, we decided as a group, we like to bring in some fresh ideas. So we contacted Angela Garing, the simple wolf media down there. And she drew up some new ideas, fresh ideas. And she also took Twisty and just kind of cleaned it up a little bit and brought it back as a refresh Twisty. And once again, we went back and forth, get revisions eliminated, have things move from one to the other. And eventually, we brought it down to final three tornadoes, and you can see them in your handout. Part, part of our division was should it have a face, not have a face? We're thinking the secret logo. You know, contemporary, clean. The middle one's kind of fierce-looking. We looked at a lot of the newer logos around. The logos, you know, pre-athletics, we have that competitive edge, that fierceness to it. So we liked that, and then we added Twisty again. We then put all this together in a voting survey that we rolled out in time for irrigation days, now school reunion. Time for irrigation days now school reunion. You can see the results.
So I will mention that this is our second, um, and final vote. We did put an earlier one out. Um, that was not well received. Everybody. Like any of them. So we went back to the drawing board and then this was our most weak one with the addition of twisty. That was fan favorite and requested. So, um, the results are fairly clear, twisty wins. But of course, we invite you to. Put your input on that at the board and decisions you made.
Uh, yeah, so if you decide to take action, improve it, we'll contact Angela. We'll get the logo in different file formats, we ask for it. Um, I'm going to look at how the trademark logo. Uh, I actually put out a couple of examples that I found from my school where there's a usage request form. And, uh. The other one is just to scan, it's a funny user graphic. So if you wanted to take literally those, and if you have any things that you like comment on, feel free to email me. Then we're gonna get together against the task force and all of them, pull through these and we'll make changes, additions, revisions. And hopefully we can roll out our new logos because we're looking for a consistent brand for everything. You go to get your kids' uniforms. Actually, whatever they have right now, you're gonna find that it's probably not one tornado that looks like.
Is the, the logo in version C? Is that in its, what would be its final form just to, to. Create the appropriate file? Will it look exactly like that?
I think it might look a little cleaner than vector.
Is that the color of it? We need to get the color corrected. Um, I pulled the color off of the logo, which is closer to the A color there. Um, and, but we were just looking at shape.
Cause like with Larry's, okay, so Larry's logo, would that be that color that it, no?
No. Probably more in the orangey red color and. I'll work with Antwood to make sure we get that color correct. But it, it always will vary depending on who's printing graphic, what kind of thread they have, what kind of final or whatever.
I think the main thing is we need to get that color orange. That color's gonna have like six to two colors. I like that two A C Z or something. And we'll know that, that number, we could tell anyone who's going to use our. This is the number we use and in the standard setting, it says they can get close or approximate.
So with a trademark on that, I'll be responsible for.
I, I think a bigger question is if, if, if a, if a club or a team or a coach wants to order apparel or. Whatever for their group. And they don't particularly care for. Whatever the selected official logo is. They, I think, should not be allowed to just choose any like the tornado you have, or you, I don't see too many. There's one on Dave's shirt today. If you're going to use a tornado, it must be the, the official one. If you don't care to use it, that's fine. Then maybe you need to use the chenille oak or just the word oak tornadoes. And not use a tornado so that all, in time, all the official tornadoes. In our building and on our apparel and our equipment is the same. And I can assure you that many, many, many hours went into the development of this and it's. Kind of surprising to me that. After all of the different things you looked at, if you remember last spring, we had some posters up here, we had to have looked at thousands. Um, and it came back to this. That's not, it's not necessarily the one I like. But it has risen to the top through the process that we use. I do not know if board members, because nothing was in your packet. Do you feel ready to make this decision today to approve? A final version of this logo or do you? Want to wait? Do you want to say no? Go back to the drawing board?
On the website?
Yeah.
So we've lost it everywhere. I posted giant posters here for the alumni that were coming back to school.
You feel like it would get a better response, you know, that school is on and you want to pay more attention to those classrooms in school? I don't like, I don't know.
I just don't want to approve something now. People say, I had no idea that this was happening.
And we forgot to add that we did push out students in the spring and they provided us with these three. So that was whittled down with our current tornadoes and then with. I guess I don't feel like we'll get any more different votes. Um, but if you would like us to push that again, I would not object.
No. But you're comfortable with the. I think anybody that's. Interested in all has already. Well, I mean, that's overwhelming. It's double. Yeah, and even if, yeah, if you added two and three or, or A and B together, they don't even equal C. All right, is there a motion or if there's no motion, we will. Bring it up again next month or give it, give us some guidance.
I think they said that there's people waiting, right?
Right, Brennan, they're gonna make T-shirts, so they're kind of waiting for the fundraiser for the trip.
But again, if, if, if they don't. If they're gonna put a tornado on it, it should be our tornado. If, if, but there's no requirement that the T-shirts or the uniforms have to have a tornado. We'd like to get them. Like Mary and Marie would like. I struggle with it because I think twisty is more a mascot than a logo, but that's my. Okay, Sheila Nagel will not take a motion.
Make a motion to approve C as our official.
Thorpe moves to approve. Letter C, logo number C as our official logo. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Uh, I would point out as well that there is a draft usage request form that. I don't know that we're, we're not necessarily approving that, we're only.
Yeah, that's why I said you should read through those and email me.
Yeah, so please, you know, if you have experience or knowledge of other organizations that have guidance, please. Share those with Larry. I don't think this needs our approval. Um, and there's a little bit more information, but remember that we are. Correcting the color and it may look a little bit cleaner than what we see here in the more high resolution. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Monica Heimbach. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero. Thank you for your efforts and thank you to all on the task force for the many hours and. All right, we have a couple of compliance reports in the packets. Did we see these before and they're corrected or final or what?
I, he did. So the only thing that I need to go through is I need to do on the L E A is the dates and I've got to go to. Because they have to be approved before we can submit them. At school for itself. No, you haven't seen it before.
Okay.
It's the, and these are in your packet, but it just says that we are guaranteeing that our teachers are highly qualified and only need all of the background checks.
Okay, so our, our administrators have gone through the process and compiled the information.
Yes.
Or, or we're assuring that we meet all the requirements of the state. So can we act upon, is there any reason we can't act on both C and D together?
No, I think they need to be separate.
Okay.
Just for reporting the state. They actually, we should probably do all three separate. I know that sounds kind of formal, but you know, the elementary one is separate from the high school and it's separate from the.
Okay. Okay, so school compliance is elementary.
There's elementary and there's high school and then we've got the L E A.
So you want three motions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Oaks Elementary School annual compliance report? Heimbach moves to approve the elementary school annual compliance report. Is there a second?
Second.
Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Monica Heimbach. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the Oaks High School annual compliance report? So Nagel moves, is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the L E A annual compliance report? Thorpe moves to approve the L E A annual compliance report. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. I have a question. The L E A then, is that just a combination of? Okay.
Yeah. I know.
Um, okay, is there any further discussion or question? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
I think if it's something's wrong, then all three of us have to go up there instead of.
All right, letter E, science room stabilization project.
So the main thing is I just would like the board to give their approval for me to continue working with Michael J. Burns as the architect. Um, and if you give that approval, I'll, I'll work with them and then they'll lead us through the bidding process and. Of course, it'll have to come back to you once we beat the bids and put out for the bids, but it's your approval to move ahead with Michael J. Burns, sir.
Okay, and we had done this last year.
Correct.
Uh, and we did work with Michael J. Burns, so, and we had fine experience with them, no problems, right? And we, we felt like since they were with us from last year, that might be cost effective to work with them again. So is there a motion to approve continuing with Michael J. Burns and associates on our science room stabilization project? Heimbach moves, is there a second? Uh, day seconds. Is there any discussion?
Preliminary budget, they have like the removal and the installation of rap paper. They'll go through and clean that up and I guess that probably could be an ever changing thing too, because we might get back to, once they stabilize the floors and they might say. Um, those science tables are not a good thing to put back up there, so we might end up having to do something different. So I've been in contact with other schools and been checking on. What are some different tables that we can use just in case that happens to come up, so well.
Remember hearing where you talk about the process of getting them out of there.
Any additional discussion? Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Robert Thorpe.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, our next item on the agenda is to be a monthly on our agenda. That spotlight, would you want to introduce what your concept is?
Sure, so I got this idea at three thirty in the morning when I was awake. That the things that the teachers are doing with um, T C B L and I really want to spotlight the things they're doing in the very first day of school. That we didn't have a bunch of people saying, hey, here's the rules and teachers made comments of like this movement that we're making towards this. I just wanted them to be able to share with you. So I put in your packets the pillars of personalized learning. So this is our guiding document. This wasn't created by myself and Gray and Brandon. This was created by the teachers and our design team with lots of input. And this is also our teacher evaluation system. That the state accepted. So, um, this is like I said, our guiding document. And so I want teachers to highlight this year. We're gonna. Um, either ask for volunteers or go strong arm them to come in. To present, right?
So when you're walking around our school, um, you're gonna see these in the hallway. You're gonna see them in the lunchroom and in the locker area, these that are printed all nice and pretty because, you know. Honestly, we don't have a lot of problems in the classroom. Where we run into problems, they're in the lunchroom and the locker area and at recess and. All of these classrooms throughout our school are making these codes of collaboration and it's the students. The students voice their opinion, we discuss it, we talk about it and then they sign it on the bottom. Showing that they had a part of this. And if you look on your sheets that I put right next to you, there's three different categories. Um, there's what the teachers need. Uh, what the learners need and then some non-negotiables on the bottom. And these are all set by the students. They talked about and we discussed in class and then they also come up with the consequences on the bottom. So it's their own.
Yeah, we're giving the learners their voice and the agency to kind of choose. So like this would be my fourth grade, so like their keys to focus on here where girl finds it. Be respectful at all times, um, and give your best effort where it might change for fifth grade or even sixth grade. With what they're saying here, as well as the consequences here. So the ones that they came up with. Um, it kind of goes in a hierarchy there and that could change from class to class as well. And one thing that then we emphasize with them saying, okay, you decided on these things. Now, we need to make sure you're following through with these and holding each other accountable as well with the expectations that you've been. I mean, that they chose really. So we left it up to them to decide that and then going forward, all right, this is your choice that you need to follow through with it now. So that's why we make them sign there. So it's more of a, kind of a purpose, let's say you understand what you were doing now in the classroom. As well as the hallway and the cafeteria and so on. Questions from you?
So you said that was from fourth grade?
Yes.
Who came up?
In his class.
In my.
In your classroom, but.
Uh, the locker areas, the lunchroom, well, the lunchroom was all of the four, five, six that were in the lunchroom that day. We just stopped. That for meeting and we talked for a little bit. Um, sixth graders did this hallway one. Um, they didn't in science class and the locker area was also done by the sixth graders.
And this just started with this year.
This year, yeah.
We've been doing collaboration for a couple of years now. Um, I did tell the K six staff that any classroom. And when I said classroom, I included the recess, the playground, the lunchroom. I mean, those are classrooms too. So I, I told them I wanted a code of collaboration for every classroom. Um, K six, it was required basically, so. Um, and our staff knocked it out of the park with, with this stuff, so. The biggest thing is they didn't create this, they facilitated the students. Talking through what needed to take place for these learning spaces to be successful for all students.
So if we look at the pillars that we have in our packet, does this apply, does this project apply directly to one or more of these pillars?
We're giving them the agency, like I think it's. Yep, so we're giving the learner's voice and like, all right, what? We're given them the agency, I think it's the learner voice. Yep. So we're giving the learner's voice and like, all right, what's gonna help you learn best? What are these expectations in the classroom that you need for the rest of the environment? And then what's gonna happen if you're not meeting these expectations? And this is set forth by their peers as well as them. So that's where that learner voice applies to them.
And do, so you, the two of you and the, the fourth through sixth and Mr. Dobbs working on this in the upper elementary, is this also evident in the lower elementary, junior high and high school?
Yes, and it's very specific. When, when you go in his math class, you see one for fourth grade, you see one for fifth grade, you see one for sixth grade. So there's gonna be more and more of these all over this.
But Ally's got it in her class and it's like, right, and I'm a high schooler. So what's the effect? Tell us about the effect on how you guys think it's been doing. I mean, we've only been at school for two and a half weeks, but what do you think?
It really gets some thinking when they do something that's maybe not on here. Wait a minute, you helped us design this, you know, it's really.
And then I'll point out here, is this meeting with the expectations that you guys have set for each other? Well, no, it's okay. All right. So then we're gonna start with that first one here, first consequence workout. So they understand what they've set forth for themselves and that they need to follow.
Are these also evidence on the playground?
The playground ladies are working on it right now.
Yeah. Work in progress. Okay, three, six. So I think you walked in on it and like, all right, what should take place in the classroom? No kissing. Well, of course. And then, so Mr. Dobbs makes that one really clear. So like it's, it's, it's just gonna take some time to get to the discussion. We're like this, this could take a couple of days to have a discussion.
You know, it's, as I was saying. We don't want a bunch of no yelling, no, 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 no. They have to put it in their words.
Well done. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Anytime.
Okay, let's move on to school policy review. In your packet, we'll, we'll have, we have three policies that are in final form that we will perform a second reading and adoption as policy. Those are BBBA, officers of the board. BCAD, executive session. And DKEA, exit interview. Again, we approved first readings last month and these are in final form. Is there a motion to?
Okay, put another in the motion. So the first two are, we're just adopting, or I'm sorry, we're amending our policy. So there's a different motion for the amendment. Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so the first two, the BBBA and BCAD, we already have those policies and we are amending them.
Yes.
So I'd be looking for a motion to amend those two policies and approve them as you have the reading in here. Okay, I move to amend policies BBBA and BCAD as presented on second reading and that they become the official policies of the district. So Nagel moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Heimbach seconds. All right, is there any discussion?
We don't really make any changes last time.
No.
Just had a pick.
Yeah. And, and the changes proposed by NDSBA, I don't believe were real significant.
On the executive session, you know, they added in the steps. They outlined those steps that we didn't have.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Robert Thorp.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero and those two policies are adopted for official policies. DKEA is exit interview and that is a new policy and we did approve the first reading. And so I'm seeking a motion to adopt policy DKEA as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Heimbach moves. Is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Robert Thorp.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. DKEA is now policy of the district. I also asked to place in the board packet policy BDA. This is just for review. This is our official policy on adopting policy. So it was there for your information. If there's nothing that anyone wants to review further, then I would ask for a motion to reaffirm that policy. Well, he saved that for me. You need to put it in the folder.
Yeah. Then I can't find the folder or open the folder.
But we can always correct grammatical errors in a little time.
Yes.
Is there a motion to reaffirm policy BDA? As presented in the. Nagel moves to reaffirm policy BDA. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Robert Thorp.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero and mediated reaffirm as of today. All right, next we'll have a move into the minutes of the August ninth regular meeting. Which are in your packets. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented in our packet? Heimbach moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion passed. All right, so now in your packet, there is year and financial reports. That's what we have beginning on page six. This is, okay, yeah, check record. So this is from June, okay, beginning on page sixty-five. And recall that we did not have all of this ready back at the July meeting. And so this is, we're backing up and we're making final approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two financial report. And we're looking at the reconciliation, the revenue and expense and the year-end financial reports. We typically in the past have approved these in one motion.
Please bring them back to the table with tables from there in the wire.
Right. Okay, is there a motion then to take from the table, the twenty-one, twenty-two financial reports? So Nagel moves to take from the table, the twenty-one, twenty-two financial reports. Is there a second?
Okay.
Day seconds. Is, I'm not sure if that's a debatable motion, but there's no discussion. All those in favor say aye. I, those opposed say no, motion passes. And now we have before us consideration of the twenty-one, twenty-two financial reports. Is there a motion regarding those reports as presented in your packet? Is there a motion to approve those three reports? Thorp moves to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two financial reports and that includes reconciliation, revenue and expense, and year-end financial reports. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? I would just note that it's my understanding that Tom completed these almost in their entirety, in even entirety with his expertise.
Correct.
So in future, if there's questions or concerns, we will visit with Tom about it. But any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. This is a document that I need to sign, so I'll pass for local.
Monica Heimbach.
Yeah.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Robert Thorp.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero and the twenty-one, twenty-two reports are approved. With regard to the August financial reports, I had shared with the board that we did not think they would be available. Shannon has been prioritizing the paying bills, payroll. She's been to training, she's preparing for more training and Tom hasn't been able to be with us as much as we had hoped, but we, we will be hoping after her training late next week. Okay, next week, she'll have pretty intense training on the software and then she'll be able to make some progress on those reports. So what have we done to do next month? Have we done July? July and August. Yes, we'll, I'll make a note there. My bad, sorry. Okay. All right, with that, there, we received an email yesterday, I believe, with the bills. That's a separate file that was not included in the packet. Now, if I understand the reports correctly, there's two versions of the same report. I should go down to that report. One has a lot, a lot of detail.
Okay, so I had some of the notes that I had from Tom where some had printing this one, some had printing a different one. So yesterday, the is that the, the first one is the one I just ran yesterday and that is the account payable for the month. The rest of them after that are what I have to do more on a weekly basis, like the the referees and camps and something that needs to get out, but can't wait for the board meeting. And so then I was printing them in a different format. And I like the top one better. It's way more detailed for everybody. And so I think that's how I'm going to try and print them from now on. But I also know that there's another way. I mean, there's a way to put everything in there and only print certain ones, but I haven't yet been shown how to do that. And so I'm not sure how I can print them and then save them and not post them right away. Hopefully next week they'll kind of go through that. And then you'll just get one big report instead of eight different ones.
Okay, and as we move forward, if the board prefers one format versus another, we need to communicate that with Shannon as she becomes more familiar with the program. I've been doing some reviewing of other board packets and minutes and those kinds of things and they're all over the place. Some have very little and they're very transparent to the public what they post and others you see not too much, but we'll, we'll work through what, what does this board want to see for us to do. Is there anything on here that you think you should highlight for us that?
Is there just one? Is it the dual? Was there just one seventy-one thousand or Cheyenne Valley? Was there two?
Um, I just think there was the one and that, I think that was salary. Yeah.
So yeah, so that's why I'm seeing invoice listing detail. For example, Cheyenne Valley is seventy-one thousand, nine, ten, seventy-five. And then we go to the.
Oh, yes, I printed out. So that was where the notes, one part of the notes in the very top said to print this report, then a couple of steps later it said to print the next report. And so, yeah, those, those accounts cables are in there twice because one is a different format than the other one. I guess that's a cool second round. I don't, it depends on.
It's easier for me to look at the one, the summarized, the, the less detailed one.
Uh huh. The only thing I don't like about that second one is like credit card, it doesn't break that down, but the first one does.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but otherwise I like the second one better. And the one thing about the credit card that, you know, it's, it's paid to the commercial credit card, so that's the vendor. And then I just have to break it down. When you see the breakdown, you don't really know who it's going to.
Right.
But we have to actually, right, yep, and you have to go. I'd like to find a way where I can actually put, you know, if it's to Amazon or, you know, another vendor inside credit card because it only gets posted to the credit cards vendor inquiry as opposed to Amazon. I don't, hopefully next week I'll figure it out.
All right, is there any further questions or comments on the bills as presented or the report format? Is there a motion to approve the bills? Day moves to approve the bill. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Those are approved. Hey, future meeting dates, we do have a scheduled budget and public hearing, public budget and property tax hearing. Gosh, our meeting went way too fast. It's at eight-thirty, so we'll have a short break before then. Bingo turn Hall. Bingo to the museum real man and see the shadow.
Yes.
Um, other than that, our next regularly scheduled court meeting is Tuesday, October eleventh at seven AM. And we're doing some checking on, okay, you know how we had to get the tax levy certificate in by August tenth? We're not, we, we don't know for sure if we need to do anything else before October tenth. I think if we don't want to change our levy, we maybe don't. I don't know why we want to change our levy, but we'll see what happens at the public hearing in a few minutes. And then our, our Tuesday, our November meeting, as you all know, I think I requested that we move that to the fifteenth because election day is November the eighth and I was asked to look at the election. So that also gives administrators some more time to get ready for the board meeting because that'll be pretty early in the month, board meeting. I would also note that November fifteenth at our meeting will be our first state law required evaluation of our superintendent. And why don't we look, go back and look a little bit at your goals?
Related to superintendent.
Yeah, related to the upcoming. I like to visualize.
Now, if you're happy.
So what I've done and I, well, I haven't gone over it with Michelle yet, but I've tried to take those goals and place them on her job description in, in what seems to be an appropriate place. And then I think once she and I go through that and get those out, I'll get those out to you so you can prepare for the formal evaluation. And we'll do some checking on what is and isn't out for the formal evaluation in November. And you know, by the next meeting, by the October meeting, then you'll need to get those into me by the end of October. And, you know, by the next meeting, by the October meeting, then you'll need to get those into me by the end of October. So you want to discuss your goals and all?
Um, sure, so I went back to the strategic plan and I went to that progress monitoring document and I kind of looked at the areas where we had either not gotten that far or had made progress and then we, you know, just didn't go back to revisit it. And then I also thought about the things that we talked about at retreat. So I'm, I'm trying to align with our PCBL goals. And then I know I talked to Brandon and Greg about these two, you know, and presented it to him. Brandon said, oh, my gosh, Anna, that's a lot. But I said, I think this was self-preservation, because I was like, can we just focus on these eight instead of the fifty-two, you know? So I think that was part of it, that it, because I feel like these would be goals that, okay, it's embedded in my daily job. Like I said, ninety percent of it has been plant and budget, but also the things that I feel like that we need to get back to and get in place that will make our jobs easier in the future too. So and some of it relies on those two guys too to help me out, like the PCBL onboarding process. That's going to be something that we're already working on, that's in place, but I felt that that was needed to be a focus for us moving forward. Because like the job description things, that's a scary thing to me, all those little things. And I know it's hard for you guys too, because how do you really get, bear it out that information on some of these little things? So I thought if we could focus on my goals more so and the individual skills, but.
I've already heard positive feedback, communication.
Great.
Not only with, yeah.
I would say that the bottom goal that developing district level success markers is, will be the focus of that school board training, should we elect to move forward with that. The deadline for application for that is day after tomorrow. And I fully expect that we will be approved for a brand of half the, half the cost of that or part of the cost of it. And that we'll want to go ahead with it, so we'll need to decide to, if some, some districts went ahead with it, they were selected a year ago and they went ahead with it. And some didn't, some didn't actually do it until summer. I would prefer to get through it sooner than now. We'll see, we'll, we'll probably be discussing that on your next meeting. Okay, any other questions? All right, if not, is there anything else for the good of the order? I'll declare the meeting adjourned at eight-ten AM. And we'll take a break and spend up about fifty more chairs.
Very important, yeah.